Selharts.
Here.
Matt Mosley.
Here.
Aaron Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tiansky.
Absent excused.
Sue Grodick.
Absent excused.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes to approve from the June 10th meeting. Any corrections, deletions? We need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
To approve the minutes, Andy Selharts.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to a legislative item on our agenda, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please observe our five-minute time limit. Okay. We'll move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. I'll begin with the Finance Committee report. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:00 PM and addressed the following items. Ordinance 2024-15, which is on third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 121.08, council salaries of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. The Finance Committee did vote to recommend that council adopt this. Just an explanation of it, the salary for council has not been raised since 2008. The mayor and our law director, Mr. Butler, worked on this legislation and basically took what would be a cost of living based on the Consumer Price Index from then to now, then projected it further out. Just so the benefit of everyone here this evening, no one can get, no elected officials in Ohio can get an interim raise that had not been predetermined. So this would not apply to anyone up here. However, this also would not go into effect until January 1st of 2028. So at that point, it would be 20 years since the salary was raised. And in this legislation, it would be $12,600, and the president receives $1,500 more, which would be 1,500, or I'm sorry, $14,100. Resolution 2024-12, which is on first reading, and there's a request to suspend the rules. This is authorizing an amended community cost share agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. This is an annual contract that we entered into that we just passed recently. However, there was a transposition in the numbers, and it was off by $180. So the corrected amount is $13,860. We do have our post-audit conference scheduled for tomorrow, and this is conducted by the auditor of state. This is not a public meeting. Once the auditor releases the results of our audit for 2023, then that is a public record. And that completes the Finance Committee. The Committee of the Whole met at 6:15, and in addition to the previous legislation that I just mentioned, also addressed everything else on the agenda. For 2024-15, which is the council salary, the Committee of the Whole recommended that we defer this to our meeting in September 9th. We do have two members absent this evening, so we will address that when we have an entire council here. Ordinance 2024-16, which is up for third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 157, connecting commission of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. The Committee of the Whole also recommended that we defer this until our September 9th meeting for the same reason. Ordinance 2024-17, which is on second reading, amending the planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to regulate certain medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis facilities in the city. We do have some amendments, and Mr. Butler did upload these amendments to our public website. I'll just go over them briefly. We're adding in that there would have to be at least one mile from any other dispensary located in the city. Also changing the hours from the original legislation, which was from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, to 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And regarding the provision to have security outside the building, the original legislation called for this for 30 minutes before opening through 30 minutes after they close, and we're going to change that to 60 minutes. So it'd be 60 minutes before and 60 minutes after. And the Committee of the Whole also did recommend that we refer this to the Planning Commission at this point, which is a requirement in our zoning code. Under new business, Resolution 2024-12, which is on first reading, the Committee of the Whole, this was the correction for the transposition, and the Committee of the Whole recommended that we adopt that under suspension of the rules. And that completes the Committee of the Whole report. And next, we have the School Board liaison, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. The School Board met this past Tuesday, June 18th. At this meeting, there was a special recognition given by high school principal, Mr. Larson. He recognized three young students who earned their diplomas shortly after the class graduated. These students were unable to graduate at that time for various reasons, but still persevered and did what they needed to do to earn their diplomas. One student, Lorenzo Jones, was at the meeting to receive his diploma. I didn't know Lorenzo, but I was very proud, and I'm sure everybody in the room was. Also discussed at this meeting was an update to the bathroom renovations. A handful of the restrooms are further ahead than the others, but they are still on schedule to be finished before the start of the school year. Lastly, Karam Hazaruni mentioned that the Chamber of Commerce will be helping with its Fall Fest Saturday, September 21st. It will be an all-day event, and the school will be very involved, and I'm hopeful that the city will too. I plan to be there and meeting plenty of residents. The next board meeting will be June 25th at 6:00 PM, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Good evening. Please enter the Home Garden Contest. The winner could be you. Show us your beautiful flower or vegetable garden, or create a backyard oasis. Email photo submissions with name and address to homegardencontest@brooklynohio.gov by August 1st. Just a reminder, Councilman Mosley mentioned this about two meetings ago. With school out and it being summertime, please slow down on the side streets. If you're driving with cars parked on your side and another car is approaching from the other direction, wait in an empty spot to let them pass by instead of squeezing three cars side by side. You just never know what's going to come out when somebody might pop out from behind or in front of a car and/or open a door. Other than that, have a nice, safe summer, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I first want to start off my report by giving a big thank you to Chief Milkie and our police department. I was granted access to see how our police handle business on a daily basis by participating in a ride-along. Lieutenant Ashweiler and Patrolman Petry were very helpful in explaining what to expect. Unfortunately, there wasn't too much action that day, which could be a good or a bad thing. I always have a great deal of respect for our officers and what they do in this. Help me see things from their perspective. I understand that I'm also there for a short time, but I do plan to be back on an annual basis. I also want to give a thank you to Mr. Verba and our service workers. I live near Bitoff, where we had some caution lights installed on a crosswalk a year or two ago. I walk this path pretty often with my kids to Marquardt. Cars seem to never know what to do when you hit the button to cross the road. So I asked Mr. Verba and Chief Milkie if we could install a centerline sign to draw attention to pedestrians crossing to get to the park. The sign was ordered and installed within two weeks, and I appreciate it. Great job. Thank you. And lastly, I was also brought to my attention over the weekend that there were some pride flags stolen from residents' homes. I saw a video of people in ski masks running up to homes to steal flags. This is completely unacceptable behavior. Regardless of what's being stolen, whether it's a pride flag or an American flag, whether it's a flag of a local sports team or a rival one, no one should ever have to worry about someone coming onto their property to steal or vandalize anything. As soon as I was made aware of these actions, I contacted our chief to ask for special attention to these specific homes, as well as to make him aware of what seemed to be a trend. Our chief of police said that this was the first time in the last year that a report had been filed due to pride flags being stolen. He has made the entire department aware of the situation, and I'm hopeful that these suspects are found. I spoke with a few residents, Tyler and Shirley, before this meeting. They are homeowners who this had happened to them. Thank you, guys, for coming today to speak and draw attention to this unacceptable behavior. This is also our last scheduled meeting until early September, but I look forward to seeing many of you at upcoming city events. Happy 4th of July, and I hope everyone has a safe and blessed summer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President. This summer, as in the past, I'll be walking a portion of Brooklyn to meet the residents to find out what are some of the questions, the concerns that they may have pertaining to the works of council and the city as a whole. I hope to see you at the door. And just as the previous two council individuals stated, wishing all of Brooklyn a happy and safe and enjoyable summer. That concludes my report.
Good evening, everyone. Echoing what Councilman Mosley said over the past few days, I received a few voicemails and texts from residents regarding pride flags being stolen from front porches in Brooklyn. I am truly saddened that this is happening in our community and agree that this is unacceptable. I also had reached out to Chief Milkie and wanted to thank him for his quick response. He and his officers are aware and placing special attention on the issue. They are currently investigating, but did not have any further information to share at this time. Lastly, like everybody else said, I want to wish everyone a safe, fun, and happy summer. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Sorry. Thank the chief for paying special attention. And it's terrible, no matter what it is that's stolen from someone's property. You know, just, in fact, I was talking to a resident right before the meeting that just the thought that someone is coming up onto your porch and taking something, I mean, it makes you feel a little more vulnerable and a little less safe. So I'm hoping that somehow we can catch these people. If anyone knows anything, please contact our police department. It's important that we send a message that that's not acceptable in the City of Brooklyn. I was contacted over the weekend by a few residents regarding the Memphis Avenue project, and I know we've mentioned this quite a number of times before, but I think this has stirred up again because the construction has started, and it's misinformation that we're redoing Memphis to add bike lanes. That is not what we're doing. Memphis Avenue is not wide enough for two lanes in each direction, and that is why the city was never able to stripe it as such. Now, people did travel that way, and sometimes this did cause accidents, especially when people were trying to turn, and there wasn't quite enough room to get around them. So we have, we're going to have one lane in each direction and a turn lane in the middle. Now, there is extra space. We're not marking it for bikes at this time. We could in the future. But just so everybody understands, we're not redoing Memphis just to add bike lanes. So hopefully, that can put some of those rumors to rest. And that completes my report. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. I also met with Chief Milkie this morning about the issue that was raised by several council members, and as always, our officers are very responsive, and I want to thank them for that, and hopefully, we can find the perpetrators that are doing this. Some updates on what's going on. A lot of projects in the city. Williamson and Bearwall, that work is completed. There are still a couple of little issues that we're working on here and there, but they did a fantastic job over in that part of our city, so we're grateful that that work is done. The I-480 and Tidham Intern Lane is also completed. The landscaping on Phase 1 that we did last year, there are some areas that we have washed out due to the topography of the land. And Everlast, who did the two ramps this year, will be installing river rock throughout that area, and that'll take place after the 4th of July Independence Holiday. As Mrs. Pucci mentioned, the Memphis Road Diet is underway. That work will continue throughout the end of the project. The anticipated completion date is mid-October. I won't rehash everything that she just said, but she's exactly right. This project has been in the works for, I believe, about three years now, and so I'm glad to see that the project is well underway. We are going to be replacing the water line on Southwood from Bitoff to the bridge. That will be the construction area. The contractor currently has the contracts. The pre-construction meeting will take place July 1st, which is next Monday, and work will begin shortly thereafter. The city has contracted with a landscape architect to design the Brock Park Memorial Upgrade, as well as a new dog park and the Kingdom Trail Phase 2. The architect will be designing the dog park and Brock Memorial Parks first, and I will be proposing that we add these to the new parks and park upgrade at the 2025 Capitol Budget. Veterans Memorial Park, the upgrade work continues with our landscape architect. We've been meeting every two weeks to keep this project moving forward. Benke, who is the architect, is on schedule to have the design completed by August. I spoke with ODOT about a few items this last week. First of all, they're moving very nicely with the paving project on I-480 in our city as well as others. They should be completed in our city in the coming weeks, including the ramps. The Southwood and Idlewood Bridges that cross I-480 are somewhat of an eyesore if you're traveling on I-480. They are on their list for sanding and painting. Southwood will be done in 2026 and Idlewood in 2028. It's a long way off. I did request that they move that project up, but I am just grateful that it's on their list, and hopefully, it gets done prior to that. As well as, I've had a couple of people reach out about the mowing behind the sound walls. That was done on June 10th. It will also take place again on July 29th and September 16th. They have rainout dates also. I also met this last week with one of Norfolk Southern's chief structural engineers, as well as one of the regional vice presidents at both the Clinton Bridge and the Memphis Bridge. You may have noticed, if you travel that part of, those parts of our city, that they're doing some work there. I'm not super pleased with the work that's taking place there. They're not quite finished yet. But once they are done, we're going to be contracting to have that, those bridges painted, as well as put additional lighting underneath that bridge. Both those bridges are very dark, and the plan is to reach out and partner with Lindale at the Memphis Avenue Bridge once this work is done. I did have an opportunity to meet with Dr. Claris on Friday. We meet once a month, and he just gave me an update on the renovations that Mr. Mosley was talking about. They are moving forward very nicely there at the, at the school. I'm also looking forward to begin the design work for the major renovation that will, the design work will begin to take place, the design portion, next year. We are putting a new floor in the atrium side of the senior center. That work began a couple of weeks ago. They actually started laying the floor today, I believe, and that should be done in the next couple of days. And it already looks a whole lot better with just the, everything out of there and the, the flat surface inside there, so I'm looking forward to seeing that. On June 27th, which is this Thursday, I'll be hosting the first of three community gatherings for the summer. This one will take place at Brock Memorial Park. Our landscape architect will be on site to discuss the proposed upgrade plan for that park. Letters were mailed out to the residents who live in that area informing them of the meeting. It begins at 6:30 PM. All are welcome to attend. You don't have to live in that area. Anyone's welcome. I will be holding two other meetings throughout the summer, one on July 18th at Marquardt Park and on August 29th, right here at Veterans Memorial Park. Those all take place at 6:30. As far as personnel updates, we have hired a new clerk of counsel. Rosa has been working in this capacity since the resignation of our previous clerk, but she is now full-time in that position. She's doing an outstanding job, and I'm thrilled to have her onboard. Chief Milkie? Did I say counsel? Mary Jo's not, we're not replacing Mary Jo, even though Rachel's up here. Clerk of courts, my apologies, not clerk of counsel. And Mary Jo's like, wait a minute here, I'm still sitting over here. So clerk of courts, not clerk of counsel. And thank you for that, Council President. And so Rosa's a clerk of courts, and she is doing an outstanding job. I'm very glad to have her. Then the last thing is Chief Milkie and his team have been conducting panel interviews for new police officers. As you recall, the council approved the increasing our number of officers by four for this year, and so we're doing that through lateral transfers, and we are moving forward with five in that process. So we hope to have conditional offers made to several of these, if not all of them, in the very near future to add to our police force. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we'll move on to directors' reports, and this evening, we have a report from our finance director, Ragus.
Thank you very much. Just one from me tonight, a review of the May 2024 General Fund Financial Report. Overall revenues are 49% of the estimated amount, 4% more than prior year due to an increase in income tax, charge for service, and interest revenue. The resulting increase in the, in the income tax revenue is, majority of that is a result of increase in non-recurring one-time revenue from withholding. Also, on the commitment side, overall commitments are 48% of the budgeted amount for the reasons previously discussed in prior reports, and also 20% more than compared to May of last year due to an increase in wages, additional hiring of budgeted positions in the public safety departments, and also timing of certain occurrences. All those, all of these are pretty consistent with prior financial reports. On the income tax front, we received our rate of distributions for June. Total distributions are $1.68 million, 5% more than June of last year. Included in these are payments that are classified as one-time or non-recurring revenue. Excluding the one-time or non-recurring revenue, June of this year is $292,000 more than in prior year. The increase is a result of an increase in net profit in individuals, which accounts for a gain of $300,000. So overall, positive news. The financial, monthly financial reports have been pretty consistent from month to month, and we received larger increase in income tax revenue in June as compared to prior year. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to legislation, and under old business, we have ordinance 2024-15, which is up for third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 121.08, council salaries of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And there was a recommendation out of the Committee of the Whole to defer this to our meeting of September 9th. We would need a motion if that's what we're going to do.
So moved.
Second.
To defer, Andy Selharts.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-16, which is also up for third reading and adoption, enacting Chapter 157, connecting commission of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn. And there was also a recommendation out of the Committee of the Whole to defer this.
So moved. Second.
To defer, Andy Selharts.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
Ordinance 2024-17, which is on second reading, amending the planning and zoning code of the codified ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to regulate certain medical marijuana and adult-use cannabis facilities in the city. We did have an amendment, which is, I did read into the record earlier under the Committee of the Whole report, and we need a motion to refer this to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
To refer to planning, Andy Selharts.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
And under new business, we have Resolution 2024-12, which is on first reading with a request to suspend the rules, authorizing an amended community cost-sharing agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selharts.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selharts.
Yes.
Matt Mosley.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Stephen Coyle.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have the second public session. If anyone has anything to say for the good and welfare of the City of Brooklyn, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will be recognized. Please observe our five-minute time limit.
Good evening. My name's Tyler Diamond. I live at 4307 Roadhouse Road. I stand before you today deeply troubled by recent events in our community. My husband, John, and I have been citizens and homeowners in Brooklyn for over seven years. This past weekend, we experienced a chilling incident at our own home, as you folks have mentioned as well. Young men in ski masks were caught on our doorbell, video camera, attempting to remove our pride flag and flagpole. And although they only managed to steal two small pride flags during that incident, the threat to our sense of safety was profound. What's even more concerning is that they returned early Sunday morning, and they did succeed in taking our large pride flag, as well as our yard sign, which is also pride-related. Despite immediately contacting the police, we have been left feeling vulnerable. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated incident for us. In 2021, we did face similar vandalism of our pride sign, an incident that we felt was not taken seriously enough. Sadly, these occurrences are not unique to our home. Just this past week, numerous other residents have reported similar acts of vandalism against their pride flags and homes that have pride decorations. I do commend the swift response of our local law enforcement in the recent incident. Thank you very much. But the reality remains that our community is facing a growing problem of intolerance and hate. The vandalism of pride flags and the harassment we endure, such as verbal abuse, slurs that are shouted from passing, passing cars, they're not mere nuisances. These are hate crimes. And they are fueled by prejudice and bigotry that threaten the safety and well-being of LGBTQ individuals and allies in our city. The LGBTQ community plus community is an integral part of our city's fabric, contributing to diverse perspectives and enriching our cultural tapestry. However, despite progress in civil rights, hate crimes targeting LGBTQ plus individuals continue to threaten our safety and well-being. Each act of violence not only harms individuals, but it also undermines our collective values of tolerance and inclusivity. It is incumbent upon you as leaders to reaffirm your commitment to protecting the rights of every resident in Brooklyn. We must strengthen our laws and our policies to prevent discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. This includes rigorous enforcement of existing anti-discrimination laws and proactive measures to educate the public about the importance of respecting diversity. Moreover, we cannot turn a blind eye to the alarming rise in hate crimes against LGBTQ plus individuals. Recent statistics underscore a troubling trend, an increase in hate crimes targeting LGBTQ plus individuals, including acts of vandalism against pride symbols like flags. We must work closely with law enforcement agencies to ensure these crimes are thoroughly investigated and prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. This requires adequate resources and training for law enforcement personnel to be able to properly identify and handle hate crimes sensitively and effectively. Education also plays a crucial role in fostering acceptance and understanding within our community. We must promote inclusive curricula in our schools and support initiatives that raise awareness about LGBTQ plus individual, issues, excuse me. By nurturing a culture of empathy and respect from a young age, we can build a future where every individual feels valued and accepted for who they are. In addition to legislative and educational efforts, we must actively support LGBT organizations and community centers that provide vital sources and support to those in need. These organizations serve as lifelines for many individuals facing discrimination and isolation, offering resources ranging from counseling to legal assistance. Together, we need to send a clear message that hate and intolerance have no place in our city. We need to stand united in commitment to creating a community where all individuals, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, can live their lives freely and without fear. In conclusion, I urge each of you to join together and me in taking concrete steps to ensure that our city remains a beacon of equality and justice for all. Together, we can build a future where every individual, regardless of who they love or how they identify, can thrive and contribute to our shared prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's back. Vic Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. Several points I brought up before, we'll rehash them. The new grass planting by the ball field due to the lights. Mentioned it before, showed photos. There was gravel there, very heavily, and they planted the grass there. I've mentioned this before. I've mentioned this before. Last time I walked by there, it was still there. Unless they were, you know, blind people, the gravel was not hard to see. And last I heard, grass doesn't grow on gravel. I brought up before the trash cans and the recycling bins out there and the Festibule, whatever you want to call it, about labeling on them. Because the blue can out there, I'm pretty sure is recycling, and there's nothing but trash in there. And is there any reason we can't have a trash can near the recycling can? We're all lazy. We're not walking down there for the trash can because there's nothing but trash in that blue can. Several people, the SIA have too. The Memphis Avenue project, we're doing these mediums. Is there any view at all that we can see these mediums, how big they are? Or is this another state secret? Burwald Avenue, they did a great job of repaving. I'm not positive, but I don't think the curbs have been that short in years. I could be wrong. Street's great, the curves are maybe two inches tall in some areas. Excuse me. And on motorcycles, bicycles, and the new electric bikes that go quite fast. If you're going to ride some of those, you do have a helmet on. Have it on properly, because if you fly off, if the helmet strap is real loose, the helmet's not going to do anything but fly off. I know personally, people that have had that happen to them. And goggles. You're on a motorcycle, you should wear them. I think if you have a shield, it's not the law, but stuff comes around a windshield. And on these EV bikes that are doing 20, 30 miles an hour, you should have goggles on too. And whenever I ride, which is very rare anymore, I always wear gloves. First thing you're going to do when you go down is put your hands down. And the borders. We're getting close to election. It's been multiple years of complaining about the borders, which were secure during a different administration. But a lot of things have changed with the new administration. But the election's coming up, so we're going to try to strengthen the borders now. Maybe we'll stop giving checks and phones to those people too. And healthcare. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Darrell B. Carroll. I live at 9204 Torrance Avenue. And I, my residence was also a sight of stealing my flag and violating my presence on, on, on my porch. My 99-year-old mother-in-law lives with us, and she lives just on the other side of the window of, of the porch. And to me, that's a pretty serious violation of my privacy and everything else going on. I have been caring for the gay community as a physician since 1980. And I can tell you that I saw the entire AIDS crisis. I saw all the types of things that went on there and the violations of rights and things that have gone on. And I really don't like to see this stuff going on. I really believe this is a hate crime that's going on through the city. I know that individually, we can't do anything, but collectively, we can make a difference and do something about making a change and let these people know that it's unacceptable to be doing what they're doing. I appreciate everybody has acknowledged the fact that this happened, that the police have been taking note of the whole, whole thing as well. And I hope that we can make this a better place for all of us to live and be together. I think my shirt says it all, it says, "Choose kindness." Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Woody, 4164 Spring Crest Drive. First, I'd like to say thank you, Kathy, for clarifying the Memphis Road rumors and so on and so forth. However, I think what makes it confusing, on Cleveland.com, June 17th, there was an article that was written. And in that article, it does state, "In addition to new crosswalks, painted charros, or bike lane lines will be added to Memphis Avenue." Additionally, aside from that, Brooklyn City engineer Michael E. Harry is quoted as saying, "We decided to do a road diet to allow bicycles to access the road. We'll have a bike lane pretty much from the east side of town to the west side of town on the north and south side of the roadway." So, it does create confusion. I think that's part of what the residents are in an uproar or confused about. So, I don't know if there could possibly be a retraction on that or an update as to correct what actually is going on. But I do appreciate your update, Kathy. Thank you.
Good evening. Ginger Marshall, 1215 North Ridge Oval. And thank you for clarifying on Memphis. I got caught in that traffic the other morning. I'm looking forward to it being done, whatever you're doing to it, because it'll be better than it is right at the moment. But that's not what I came up here to talk about. I actually didn't plan on coming up here to talk until I heard a couple of the other people talking about the flags. My day job, I am the administrative coordinator for the pride clinics at one of our local hospitals. I'm not here in that capacity. But I talk to patients, and I talk to other people all day long. And Cleveland is overall a pretty good area to be in. Kiahoga is a pretty good area to be in if you're LGBT and for other groups. But I hear stories about mistreatment. I hear stories about what makes people feel unsafe where they live. And things like having pride flags ripped down leads to more problems. And if people feel free to come up on my front porch and rip down a flag, what else are they going to feel free to do next week, next month? How soon will we see houses tagged? How soon will we see cars vandalized? How soon will we see assaults? I go back and forth on whether taking the flags is an actual hate crime or not, but it is certainly on that path. And I think it really seriously needs to be addressed. And if the queer people in Brooklyn aren't safe, who else isn't safe? What groups are going to be targeted next? We've already had the vandalism at the cemetery. And that's another indicator that Brooklyn may not be safe for a lot of people. And that's not a message we want to send. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn? Okay, did you want to say something there?
I can address a couple of, I can address a couple of things. And one, renovations are not done yet. So, there'll still be a lot of work to set up there, including new sidewalks. The gravel will be removed, which is put there temporarily. The grass will be mainly growing in the fall. It's obviously nothing is growing right now. It's, with the temperature being what it is. Mr. Ardito, you're welcome to come if you want to look at the plans, the site plans for the Memphis Road Diet. It's not a state secret. We've been talking about this for three years. So, you're welcome to come take a look at it. As far as the curbs go on Bearwald, the depth that was, that project was done is the same. The curbs appear to be shorter because we actually added an additional 3/4 of an inch of asphalt across that entire project to make the road last longer and to be more durable. So, it's actually to the benefit of those living there that, that actually was added on to that. That's it.
Thank you. I just want to address Ms. Woody's comment. And yes, that was unfortunate that that was the focus of the article. The room is there for bike lanes. And when road projects are done now, we're supposed to look at multimodal forms of transportation. So, cities and public entities are supposed to look at not just the cars, but also cyclists and pedestrians and keeping them safe. So, that was not the original intent. Like I said, the room is there if we want to paint them. But the original intent was to make it safer for the motorists by adding the turn lane.
Yeah, just, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
And just to piggyback on that, the width of the road is not changing. We're not shrinking the size of the road. So, the, the footprint from curb to curb is going to be the exact same. The only difference is now is the way that it's going to be striped. Obviously, we have updated asphalt in there. We'll have the mediums in there in front of City Hall and in front of the new library. They're very small. But this was done 100% for safety. That's why this was done, to slow traffic down, to allow residents to be able to turn left without fearing fear of being rear-ended because someone's traveling in two lanes. There is room for bike lanes over there. Whether people ride their bikes there or not, it's completely up to them. We're not paying the charros on it, at least not at this time. But it is unfortunate how that was written. I had nothing to do with that article. I was not consulted on that article. So, I will certainly, Mr. Henry's well aware of, of, of what our plan is, is design on this. I'm certainly not faulting him. He has a million projects going on. So, but as Mrs. Pucci mentioned, the, the idea behind this was to have one lane going east, one lane going west, and having the turn lane in the middle. That's the focus of it. If people want to ride their bikes in those outside lanes, they're welcome to do so. But as she mentioned a second ago, we're not paying charros, at least not at this time.
And also, it was not an option to widen the road so that there would be two lanes in both directions because that was extremely cost prohibitive. So, I would like to welcome and thank the members of the LGBTQ plus community and their allies for attending this evening. I'm very sorry that this has happened in our community. Everyone up here, I think I can safely say, you know, we deplore anything like this, and we don't want our residents feeling unsafe and vulnerable. And I'm very sorry that this happened. So, we, we need to do better as a community and hopefully, send a message to the perpetrators or potential perpetrators that this will not be tolerated in our city. And I would also like to welcome Mary Schreiber to the meeting. She is the new manager of the Brooklyn branch of Kiahoga County Public Library. Does anyone on council or the mayor have anything further? Okay, we need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
To adjourn, Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Matt Mosley?
Yes.
Aaron Borowski?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Stephen Coyle?
Yes.